All right, I'm gonna get started tonight.
They are all set.
Welcome. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting for Tuesday, November 19, 2019. May I have an approval of tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Any comments from the public tonight? All right, moving on to presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. John and Abigail Scholars. Dr. John Buckey, will you come up to present? Thank you. You're a regular here.
Keep it up, please.
Thank you.
I remember when this scholarship list was about.
Oh, can you please go to the podium so the audience at home can hear you? Thank you.
You don't want to be here. Do you want me to go? I don't mind being blocked at all.
Stand right in front of Zoe.
As you were saying.
So I remember when this list of scholars was about 15, and it's more than double that now. The John and Abigail Adams is a merit scholarship that students qualify for based on their MCAS scores. So they need to score in the advanced category in at least one of three subject areas. So that's English Language Arts, Mathematics, or Biology is the science/technology test that we give. And so the students that we will call up this evening scored in advanced in one of those, and advanced or proficient in the other two. The scholarship qualifies them for eight semesters of undergraduate tuition at the Massachusetts Public College or University.
Wow.
So it is a wonderful opportunity for students if they decide to stay within the Massachusetts post-secondary education system. This can help with tuition for up to eight semesters. So I will call up the list of students if they would line up along that railing. There'll be more of you than there is railing. And then they've been prompted that they're going to be asked to speak. So they're going to talk a little bit about their post-secondary plans, if that is a college now, or work, or travel, or a gap year. So, as I read your names, please come up and be recognized. And tonight you get the official letter. Do not lose this letter. This is money I am handing you. So Maya Bolling, Lily Bartlett, Jessica Beckto, Caitlin Belanger, Juliana Bouchard, Chloe Congdon, Lauren DePree, Luli Day, Anjali Dar, Victoria Dixon, Anita Duggan, Tessa Duggan, Frasia Feeny, Sky Flag, Matthew Giacchetti, Lydia Gill, Devin Holdgate, Matthew Holdgate, Skylar Cardell, Brianna Laville, Maya Lyden, Luke McKay, Joel McVicker, Caleb Melo, Amelia Matson, Aiden McCormick, Rowan Moore, LaShay Papley Beckford, Micah Patterson, Rihanna Perrin, Phaedra Plank, Jaclyn Ray, Sophie Reese, Aiden Roberts, Soneka Weber, and Morgan Wynn. Round of applause.
Lot of kids.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Lily Bartlett, what might you do after Nantucket High School?
Hopefully, I'm going to college. Still in the application process.
Local college?
Um, not really sure. We'll see where the wind takes me.
Jessica Beckto.
I also want to go to college after, and I'm thinking about studying criminal justice.
Caitlin Belanger.
Considering business school or also the Air Force.
Juliana Bouchard.
I plan to go to college and I also want to major in biology.
Chloe Congdon.
No.
She's not here. I'm giving you somebody else's.
Debri.
Yeah, I'm planning on going to college and maybe majoring in something similar to college or business.
Tori Dixon.
I'm planning on going to college and perhaps studying business and law.
Anita Duggan. Your sister's.
I would also like to go to college and travel a little bit, too.
Rachel.
I plan on going to college and studying biology.
Scott.
I also plan on going to college and studying biology.
Matt.
I also plan on going to college and I'll hopefully be majoring in business or film production.
Liddy.
I also plan to go to college and I want to major in communication.
Dylan.
I'm planning on going to college in Boston and studying computer science and engineering.
Matt.
Planning on going to college with a major in sport management.
Scott. I plan to go to college and major in biology. And if the front row would take us, if the back row would take?
We've never had this many students before. This is amazing.
She's not got none of us to know what we're teaching.
Lion.
Okay, I'm planning on going to college somewhere new.
Luke.
I also plan on going to college and studying something in the humanities.
Plan on going to college in some form of engineering.
I also plan on going to college in some form of engineering.
Paige.
I plan on going to college and studying engineering.
I also plan on going to college and I'm going to be studying international development.
I think that's the college I'm going to. I'm planning on doing anything.
I'm planning on going to college to study education and business.
April.
I'll be going to college and I'm currently undecided, but I hope to travel abroad.
I plan to go to college, but I'm undecided. Either I'll do a show or I'll just go back to the city.
Hi, I'm planning on going to college and becoming a nurse and hopefully working for Dr. Lefry since he's never retiring, right?
I plan on going to college and studying either pre-med or pre-bed.
I'm planning to go to the Air Force and then college.
I'm planning to go to college to study business.
What you plan to do?
Okay, my name is Dana Perrin and I'm planning to go to college to study business.
That's great.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And does anyone else have anything to say?
There must be some really proud parents out there. Thank you for your kids. Thank you for being part of the Nantucket community. And we do hope you come back, Sophia, and help Dr. Lefry out.
Yeah, no, congratulations to you all. And it's just such a great group of young men and women. And as you said, it's the largest group we've seen ever. So congratulations to you all.
Tim. Congratulations, good luck, and I'll be there.
That's good. Steve?
I'm delighted to see you all get here despite what we may or may not have gone through six years ago. It is a real thrill to see you guys up here and to recognize you and recognize you in the other sense. Thanks.
We are very proud of you, and I did promise them that they did not have to stay for the whole meeting.
Absolutely not.
So I'm sure they're all anxious to get back and do their homework. Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
It's a good group.
It's a large group.
Really good.
Very exciting. That is amazing. Amazing. I'm fine. How are you, Steve?
As a list saver.
Yeah, Joel, come back. Everybody except Joel. That's right. Thank you, Joel, for being here.
Is Joel the only football player? Are you the only football player?
He's a rare breed, you know. Smart football player.
Oh. Whoa, really?
No, you're a rare breed. We know you're rare. Come on.
Very cool.
And he has gray hair, too.
Who, Joel?
Yeah.
They're just comments and you have many powers.
All right. Now we'll move on to our presentation with Michael Horton for the NCTM Regional Conference Report. I'm gonna ask that the board members move down so we can see the screen. Not blocking their screen. Okay.
Thank you.
So my name is Michael Horton. I'm the Director of Curriculum Assessment for STEM. We had the honor of going to the NCTM Regional Conference this year, late September, here in Boston. The national conference is later in 2020 up in Chicago. But with the opportunity to go do a close conference, we got a group together and went up just about almost two months ago now. Small team, but, you know, very important because we have a couple of new positions here. Elise Gagline is the math coach for NES and NIS. That's the first year of that position across those two schools. And Jeanie Critchley, you know, for years, grade four.
And years and years.
Classroom teacher. Where I started my career is Jeanie's TA back in 2000. This is Jeanie's first year as the NIS math and Kara. Yes. Forgot that. Math intervention is her first year as the NIS math intervention teacher. And then we kind of focused on the transitions this year. Two leading into three and five leading into six. Not to mention that, you know, Kara's been a team leader of grade five for several years. And Deb has been filling in as the team leader for grade two. Both have a very strong love for math, and it comes across in their instruction. You can see it in their classrooms. So we put together as team. And I got, just before I get started, I just have to share. At first, I was a little disappointed that, you know, we're not traveling to New Orleans, or Orlando, or Austin, Texas, as we've done in the past for the national conference. And to keep it local, the first day I was there, there were four or five presentations that either I could have given myself, or were someone else's work that was being recycled for the second time, and it's like, oh, I think I've seen this one before. Or not quite the A-team in some of the local speakers. But on the second day, I went to two sessions that you'll see here in the presentation were probably the best sessions I've ever sat through in any conference, whether it's NCTM or NSDA, which is science. And we'll get to those sessions in a moment. I'd like to introduce Kara, who I just talked about from grade five, Jeanie Critchley, NIS math intervention, Elise Gagline, math coach. Deb Davis unfortunately is out sick today. I hope it wasn't the anxiety of speaking in front of such a large group. But we wish her well, and Elise is gonna cover her slides for her. So, Elise. Yeah, and I'll swap out.
All right. So one of the big messages that we continue to hear about math and other content areas is just that importance of equity for all students. And when we think about mathematics, it means that we want to make sure that all kids have an entry point into the conversation, that they're able to access the content, that they can share their thinking with peers, and ask questions when they don't understand. So you'll hear that message of equity in several of the ideas that are shared tonight. As we consider equity for our kids, we want to think about the developmental level of mathematics. So making sure that we give our students plenty of opportunities to use manipulatives, do plenty of hands-on activities before we move them to that pictorial stage, to drawing pictures of what they're solving, and then progressing to the actual plugging, plugging the numbers in and writing the algorithms. So with that in mind, we want to make sure that we don't go too fast for our kids, that we slow down. Because if we go too fast, then we're creating gaps and we end up going back anyways. So that is something that continues to be a message that we hear in conferences like NCTM. All right. And one of those ways that we can allow all of our learners to participate is through problem-solving tasks. And Jeanie's gonna share about this one a little bit.
I am.
Come on up.
Is it linked to this?
Yeah.
Oh. It's me. You can see on the slide exactly what it says. We're talking about students playing with problems like a sandbox, meaning they need to have, they need to uncover the numbers, move them around, build the equations. Because if it's just us telling them, then it's a very narrow understanding. If they're doing the work themselves, they're building the understanding, and then that's understanding they can use in other situations. For example, you may, if you ever run across a kid who tells you they're good at times tables but they can't do division, that would be an example of it. They don't understand that it's the same thing in a different direction. And that's what we need to build so the kids have that confidence and ability to manipulate numbers and understand size and how things partition, not just a rote memorization of these are this narrow particular bit of facts. And also another piece of that sandbox sort of thing is that they need to be able to explain their ideas to each other and, in a collegial way, defend their argument. Because they're helping, that proximal learning helps the person next to them to understand the piece that was missing, or explains it in a way that kids can speak to kids. The best person to teach you something is someone who just learned it. They know where you are and how to get you there. One of the things that Eureka uses and we kept hearing about is what is called exit tickets. And they're a quick check at the end of a lesson or an activity for understanding so that the person, the adult in the situation, can then find out who's ready for more, who needs a quick refresh, and who's struggling with a particular piece of it so that we can then get that instruction to meet the person where they are. And part of that assessing is we need, we're working on making sure that we're giving assessments that are useful all the way across and that those assessments are used for next steps of instruction. And that the teachers can work together to calibrate the grading so that what's, what's an acceptable answer in one room is also the same level that we're looking for in any other room so that when students move forward from teacher to teacher, from grade to grade, that they're building that understanding, they're building that ability to explain their answers, they're building that ability to, you know, document what they're doing.
Yeah, one more.
Homework. You can, you can read the little sign at the bottom. Less is more, which most parents would probably be happy to hear. One of the struggles that we find is when kids do something in a group at school and then go home and try and do it independently. Some essential piece of information is not right at their fingertips, and then the adults trying to help don't even know where to begin because that's not how they did the math. So less is more. And we've been talking also about how to support kids at home that does not involve paperwork. Like what kind of, just the way you do things with reading with your kids at home, what kind of things can you do to build that math strength, that math conversation, and those things that will help a student moving forward at any grade level?
All right. So all of this leads into the importance of mathematical discourse for our students that we should be providing many opportunities for our kids to talk about what they're learning. Like, gone are the days where the teacher is the only one doing the talking. We want our kids to be fully engaged in their learning by sharing it with others, asking for clarifications, sharing how they solve those problems. And something that we hear a lot in education is the person who's doing the talking is the one who's doing the learning. So we need to make sure that our kids are talking. All right. Mr. Horton, you are up.
So one of my sessions was Graham Fletcher. I encourage you to look up his website. It's just so much more than three act tasks these days, which is just a strategy, a way that Dan Meyer has coined into basically making a math lesson, you know, drama performance. Act one is a hook. Act two, we're doing some of the work. And act three, we're looking at the answer and analyzing it. We've done this at Math Nights this year, last year. But now he's got progression videos and so much more. This is not new, okay? I'm thrilled that DeeDee Avery is here tonight because DeeDee's been doing this for many years, back to her days at NES, where it's not about what the teacher is doing. It really needs to be more about what the students are doing. So instead of having teacher-centered, less is more, having the kids talking, the kids engaging. So for years, this is kind of the model that if there's a 60-minute lesson, the teacher was really in control of more than half of that lesson. And the students, if they were lucky, they got a little bit of time to work on some of their math at the end of class and ask some questions then. So we want to flip it to where the teacher's really just doing that intro hook, and then the students are actually the ones busy doing all the work. And if you ever walked into DeeDee's classroom, she'll be saying, that's great, now go share it with a friend. Or that's awesome, now try it backwards. Cool, do three more. And she's really not really doing too much, other than directing students to the actual math activities. She's set the stage so kind of like that, you know, performer, director, ringleader, if you will. The students are actually the ones doing the heavy lifting and all the work. Therefore, there's more learning going on in the classroom. So related to this, a traditional math lesson has, you know, been for years, there's an opening, there's a work session, and then there's a closing. So there's a beginning, and a middle, and an end. So we still have a beginning, middle, and end. But the opening is a little bit shorter because one of my beliefs is that our attention span is equivalent to that of our age, except when you get to be above 40, it starts going the other way. So 41 is equal to 39, and so on and so forth. So if you're talking to 13-year-olds, you've got about 13 minutes. All right, you might have less in some cases, but it's a smaller amount of time. The work session itself is roughly about the same. But what's important is the closing. And Eureka math talks about this a lot, that what happens at the end, the wrap-up, the exit ticket, the discourse, the, hey, you know, did we meet our goal today? What did we learn, you know, and talking about it, is what is remembered. Brain research tells us that we remember the last thing, the most recent thing, the best. Then the first thing, what was the middle thing? Just the other night at a local island restaurant, the waiter was going through the specials, and I got the soup and the dessert, but I have no, what was the entree? I didn't remember the middle one. This is so fascinating. So, Eureka, a lot of people talk new math. Eureka is not new math. It is visual math, okay? It's gone visual, which is based upon a lot of research that a lot of us don't realize that we actually would learn better if we saw things pictorially or drawn out. So we go from, you know, the concrete working up to the abstract. So in Eureka's program, students read the problems, then they draw pictures, and Kara's gonna get to that in a minute, of the representation of what's going on. And then the higher-order skill of writing out the equation, developing the equation, writing out the answer, coming up with the explanation, is in the end. What we are adding here, and something that we've taken on tour, and we've presented now at NES and NIS, Elise, Giles, and myself, is the idea that you need to speak in there, okay? Students need to walk before they can run. So we want them to start talking about the math just as they're starting to draw it pictorially before we ever even consider asking them to write it out, which is that higher skill. We will get there, it's just kind of, let's slow down and take some time. And I just threw this in here because it does relate to one of the mathematical practices to construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. Debate is a good thing. Getting students to talk about math and listen to other opinions and different ways of solving problems is a good thing and leads to long-term retention. So without further ado, a good segue into Kara showing an example of some visuals.
So one thing we teach kids to do in Eureka math is to make a tape diagram to solve a problem. And we start in kindergarten teaching basic tape diagrams, and they get more sophisticated. And Mike says that by the time kids get to algebra, they'll still be using tape diagrams and they'll be able to solve problems. Part, part, whole. So they're a part, the whole relationship. The tape diagram doesn't solve the problem. It helps the children solve the problem, represent what's happening in the problem. Here, there's a basic example down at the bottom. This would be a 5 plus 3, or a 5 minus 3, tape diagram. And students begin them in kindergarten. They get more sophisticated as they advance through higher grades. And here are some examples. It's hard to see. The top is stage one kindergarten. They might just be drawing five flowers, and then three more flowers. And they get much more sophisticated as you go on into the higher grades. And here are some, it's hard to see this, but in the middle problem, kids were drawing tape diagrams in my class today to solve some complex multiplication, multi-step multiplication problems with two, with three-digit and four-digit multiplication.
I'm sorry if those weren't in the original packet. We just added some pictures, you know, they take up space.
Fresh tape diagrams from today.
Yep. You want to come back with this? This is where it's going for Deb.
So how does this all translate to the work that we're doing at NES and NIS? We're focusing very much on the idea of accountable talk. And accountable talk is that respectful language between partners or small groups where students are really sharing their thinking, they can reflect on their learning. It's beneficial to both the speaker and the listener. And it provides the opportunity for everybody to engage in that conversation. Something as simple as a picture of same but different could be presented to kids as early as kindergarten to talk about what is the same but different in this picture. So in a partner A, partner B protocol, I might say the apples on the left are red, and Kara would be my partner B, and she would share with me how they're different. And we're building our understanding. We're sharing that we can look at that same picture but come away with different ideas about it. You wanted to add to this.
So it's just getting the idea of having students verbalize their thinking, okay? How to express that 5 equals 5, all right? But, you know, some of the stems are different, or different lengths, or they're arranged in a different way. This builds up to the idea of the equal sign, okay? Those of you who crunch algebra problems for fun regularly know that what's on the left side of the equation must equal, or in chemistry, Redux equations, must balance on the right side of the equation. So even when you get into trig functions, and maybe Joel can back me up on this one, sine squared plus cosine squared equals 1. You know, like, they're the same thing. But there's so much going on there that this side of the equation equals the other side of the equation. So the younger grades at NES, it's really important to get kids to be able to verbalize, okay, I see what's same, but also to understand how is it different? Another really cool strategy out there is my favorite no, where you actually give students problems that were solved incorrectly. And they have to look and figure it out, like, what was the missing step? Or what did the person do wrong? And then discuss it and debate it. That's also a very powerful exercise for students to engage in.
You see here some anchor charts? These are teacher-created anchor charts to help our kids at NES and NIS engage in those conversations. So the first step is to make it really visible for our kids. Give them that entry point. We teach it very intentionally, practicing how that looks and sounds so the kids become so comfortable with it that we can start to pull away those scaffolds. During our most recent PD days in October for NES and, sorry, for NIS in November for NES, as Mike said, we presented on the importance of engaging all of our learners through accountable talk to those classroom teachers, and then provided them with a workshop time where they were able to create the visuals that they would need for their students. So here you see one of our. So here you see one of our lovely teachers from N I, N E S, so proud of her work. And the kids are using these supports in class. See some examples. These were found in class. I'm going into classes to visit, and I hear kids from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade using their sentence frames, sharing their ideas, sharing their thinking, and they're talking about math. It's super exciting. Here are some pictures, some takeaways of really, really recent conversations where I was able to catch kids sharing their ideas. So N E S are on the top two, and then N I S, they're on the bottom, so it's happening at all levels. It's really exciting.
So in closing, just thank you to the school committee again for supporting, you know, P D when we travel off-island. This might be it for this year for math, but I just want to point out that there is a science conference later in April, March, April, in Boston. So when we come asking, you know, for a large group, it's our one time to go to a local, so we don't have to travel to Austin, or Orlando, or Las Vegas, or somewhere more exotic, and save some money for the district. Questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Zona, do you have any questions?
I have some comments to lead to a question, and I hope I can... You're so good.
Speak from a distance.
Fairly. I could just remember, and math is a subject I have a great interest in. I remember growing up, my brother older and a sister younger. Older brother never had to pick up a book. He could just do it. He was smart. And if he ever applied himself, he would be a really rich man, but he never applied himself. I had to study a little bit, and my sister had to study to death. Fast forward to my family. My oldest is a math whiz. She just thinks analytically, and it's just scary. My son struggled a lot. And then my last child, she didn't struggle a lot. She was midway through. So you have three different levels. I see it all the time. And the new math, I don't quite get it. I never really wanted to apply myself to the new math. I was stuck in the old math. But the question is, or the comment is, you know, each student is different, and I cringe a little bit when I hear about more student-led than teacher-led. I'm impressed, though, DeeDee, I have to say. But, you know, sometimes in class, it's different. You're engaging, the students are having fun, and then that test with those boxes get in front of you, and you just freeze up. What do you have to offer to make me feel that we can still do it?
So you said the key word, which was engaging. Because if I were up here for 15 minutes, and it's possible some people have already tuned out, okay? But if I'm up here for 15 minutes talking about the same thing, and I'm just doing all the talking, and you need to listen and get it, right? That's not so engaging. But if I give you a hook and a video, it's okay. I want you to work through that, you know, talk with a partner, and figure it out. And this is where, believe it or not, this guy, Dan Meyer, has coined this phrase, and we talked about last year, be less helpful. Sometimes we do too much for students, and we're not having to develop the skills of learning it. The idea here is like through discourse, through, you know, what's naturally social with kids, it can lead to such better understanding where the ceiling is a much higher ceiling than people who hit a wall at a certain age. It's all about engagement. And again, this is not new. To get the focus off the teacher and onto the kids. Not what the teacher's doing. The teacher's still got to teach, don't get me wrong. DeeDee does, okay? But the trick is, the students are doing the heavy lifting, okay?
So it builds their confidence, in other words.
And I think that the idea that it's student-led does not mean the teacher's not involved. It gives the teacher the opportunity to hit group by group by group, which actually allows you to differentiate. So when you meet those two people who really have it, you can push them, for those two people, as opposed to 20 people being asked to do the same task at the same level. The student engagement part allows the adult in the room, or whoever, to meet those individual kids in small group where they are and go forward from where they are, as opposed to...
Getting swallowed up in the group.
Way back to Catholic school, where you had kids who were like, knew it when they walked in the door, and kids who still didn't know it when they left, because it was sort of a one-size-fits-all. This gives the opportunity for the teacher to get a, not one-size-fits-all...
Differentiate.
Differentiate per kid, per day, per lesson, because as you were describing, there are kids that certain parts are going to be easy, and then something else is going to make them hit the wall. And what I'm noticing in the small groups I've been working with is the more the kids are talking, the more information I get about where they're stuck. Because if it's just the answer on the paper, you don't get the background of how they got there. Sometimes it's a lucky guess that looks right on a piece of paper, and the information behind it is like way off. But you wouldn't know that unless you heard the conversation happening.
Right.
Unless you had the information coming from the person doing the math. So that's where it's helpful. But it's not, it's not less teacher engagement just because there's more student engagement. It's just a different kind of teacher engagement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
There's some really exciting things going on at N E S and N I S. I encourage all school committee members, and I'm sure Steve's been in there a little bit, to get in the classroom and see what's going on. It is pretty cool. There's another cliche that, you know, primary teachers teach students, and secondary high school teachers teach subjects, okay? So we want to flip that a little bit, because you're not just teaching math, you know? You're not just teaching, you know what? The kids get their grade what they get. No, learning is messy, you know? It's hard, and it's a little bit messy. So I think we probably have a little more work to move on up as we move up through the grades. So that's probably a good preface for maybe the next team, is that middle school, high school transition. Because with Eureka and the work that's going on here, I'm very confident some awesome things are happening K through five into the middle school, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
I think this is terrific. I've sat in many classes as a student and volunteer of watching the eyes just glaze over when you've had the adult speaking, particularly in math. I think it's a subject that it builds upon itself, and so if you don't have the initial concepts, it's harder as you go through the week or through the month. So I love the communication piece, and I think for the way certain kids learn, I think for when you're sitting there and you've already had them have the dialogue, when they're trying to figure out the puzzles, they've got their own internal voice kind of going over the conversations that they had either with their peers or to themselves. And so that, I would imagine, is going to be more helpful than when they're zoned out on listening to the teacher talk and got lost 15 minutes earlier. So I love this. I love the participation. I love the group work. It sounds like the kids obviously have to be out of their seats and work with their partners, and I think it's brilliant. So thank you so much for your work.
And it absolutely translates to when the students then need to be independent, because they've said it, they've practiced it, and now they can record their thinking on classwork, homework, assessments, high-stakes tests. That's where we want to get with them, that they are so comfortable with that process that they're confident about the answer they're going to put on the paper.
I think it's very interesting. I think it may hopefully bring an end to the, "I'm not good at math" that we hear so often. I mean, but I'm very interested, I'd be interested to see going up to the middle school and the high school.
I, just a feeling I have, being talking to elementary and intermediate students, there's more than ever who aren't saying that anymore. Their kids are saying their favorite subject has been, is becoming math, you know, for some of the things that we're doing.
Hi, I have a question for you. Accountable talk is definitely a focus in K to five. Do you see this potentially being a useful tool also for our middle school students? I see, you know, again, we're teaching this new important piece to our elementary students, and eventually in middle school, we will see that accountable talk already in place. But for the students who have perhaps missed some of this attentive focus on accountable talk, is this something that you would consider, or is it something that's already kind of in place as it is?
So there's an opportunity, you know, with my role filling in as a CPS assistant principal to make that happen, and I think that's going to be a no-brainer. I'll tell you that, you know, there are middle school teachers, science teachers included, who have been jumping in on the practices actually well before N E S and N I S. So there's also some components in place. But yes, when we think about our Yale students and getting students to interact with each other, and someone said collaboration in groups, yeah, we need to keep working that way, so it focuses more on the kids and less on the teacher.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm happy to hear of the hands-on activities for the kids, because I think that is reaching a whole group of students that before math was just sitting down at a desk, working, you know, independently. So I think the collaboration, the hands-on activities are really helpful for our kids. One thing, I want to piggyback on what Zona had said about the assessments. I'm kind of surprised, and it's funny, because I ran into a teacher of mine from the Nantucket Public Schools long ago, who said that she used to work so hard at developing several assessments for the students in the class to meet them where they were. So if we are now moving towards Eureka assessments and no longer teacher assessments, how do we make sure we're reaching our students at the level that they're at and where they're at?
Right. So do you want to talk about ideas we have?
Cara can talk about it too, but I think the thing is, is that we're a standards-based school, so if we're reporting out on the standards, then we need the assessments to match those things so that we have, so we can document, well, you're progressing this close to the standard, and here's, these are the three opportunities you had to show that, and that's where it is. It doesn't mean that the, just because the assessment is standards-based, doesn't mean that the instruction isn't meeting the kid at the level they're at. But we need to be able to show where the gaps are or what the next thing is. And so what happened in the way-back days is when the teacher creates an assessment, maybe the kids in my room on one particular year happened to be really strong in this particular area. Well, my, how I scored that test, and how the naked store neighbor teacher scored that test, and what actually happened, might have had a wider range. And so we want a range in terms of the kids in the class, but we want classroom to classroom for those opportunities and those assessments to be similar.
That makes sense.
And part of that is that you're going, we're going, you know, somebody's going from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade to seventh grade. We want the language to be the same. We want the tape, you know, things like tape diagrams and those sorts of tools. We want children to be able to use them year after year. So we want that similarity in languages, like you don't want to...
Right. That makes complete sense. It does.
Doesn't mean the teacher's not using other strategies to meet an individual student where they are in the learning part. It's just we want to have the same, same bar.
Same language, same bar. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm going to pass this on to Steve.
Yep. And while that's passing, I pulled this up because, you know, not that I'm making work for ourselves to have a presentation part two, but speak is kind of early on in the grand scheme of things. You know, we talked about walking before students can run. On the assessment, the MCAS, the MCAS is not a verbal assessment, okay? You can't talk your way through the MCAS. You have to write your way through the MCAS. And recently, you've had to do it on a device, and you have to put it in a text box. A few years ago, before Park, before everything went online, students could draw pictures, explain their thinking for the constructed response, or the open response questions, okay? And get partial credit. If they could show their, show their thinking by dividing oranges up, they might have received two or three points, okay? We are working on improving our scores on the selected, excuse me, the open response and the constructed response questions, because eventually they have to have that output of writing the answer out, or in this case, typing it out. So that's kind of our ultimate goal. But here we are, beginning of the year, we're focusing on the talk and the speaking, getting kids debating that math practice.
Great, thank you. Steve?
I'm delighted to see math getting the attention that it deserves, needs, however we want to put it. And I don't just mean by your attending these conferences, but you have an interventionist, you have a coach. This is the kind of thing we need to make these things work. I know the classroom teachers are good, but every bit of help these kids can get, I'm delighted to see that we're doing that.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, I totally agree with where, when you find like the solutions yourself, you feel like you own it a little better. Like, I'm in calculus right now, and like, if the person next to me gets their answer, they're like, you want to see like my work? It's like, no, I want to like, I want to find my way, stumble my way to the answer myself. Because you feel like it's, there's sort of a sense of gratitude and like that, that knowledge is really solidified in your brain. And that's what the teacher is there for too, is if you really are lost, they can sort of give you clues down the path. So I think that's awesome.
That's what Dr. Williams?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been doing naturally, you know? You have to figure it out, you know? It's problem-solving.
Thank you very much.
Really.
Yeah.
Stay there, do you want me to introduce?
Sure, that'll be great. Thank you.
So our next presentation is on the energy plan, and I'd like to introduce Lauren Sinatra, who is the energy coordinator for the town of Nantucket. And coming with her is Margaret Song from Cape Light Compact. And so is a select person. Welcome, Donna. You want to introduce?
I was just going to say a couple of words before they go.
Okay.
Hi, Don Holgate Select Board Chair. I just wanted to say that becoming a green community has been a priority of the board for some time. It very much plays into our overarching theme of our strategic plan of sustainability. And we adopted the stretch code at last year's town meeting, which was an important piece. And this has, this has been worked on for quite some time now. Keep in mind that this is actually a fluid plan. Items in here have been identified that could get us to this 20% reduction, but it is something that is designed to be able to be changed in terms of priorities, budget constraints, and so, and technology advances. We are not 100% committed to each one of those, these things. It's a identification of ways that we can do this, but it is up to us how we implement, when we implement, and how we might want to alter what we're doing. And it's important for us as a board, and you all as a board, to all be on board with this, to be able to move it forward this year. Thank you.
Good evening to the board. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Lauren Sinatra. I'm the energy coordinator for the town, and it has taken years actually to get to this point in time. Green Communities has been in existence since 2008. The stretch code in particular has taken years to educate our contracting community, our builders, our inspectors, to be comfortable with. And by getting that passed at town meeting, that really did give us the go-ahead from the community that this was important to pursue. It not only gives the municipality, the school, and town access to funding for energy efficiency projects, but it really does give a signal to the state and the community that environmental leadership, reducing our local environmental footprint, is important as a town community. And this is not a town initiative, this is truly a community initiative. So we've been fortunate to work collaboratively, I think, since March with the schools to get all of the facilities audited as part of this plan. The vehicle policy, working with the state and the school, they've never made so many adjustments, and they were happy to do so to get the school to a comfort level that we were able to hopefully get to a point in time where today we can move forward. And unfortunately, we are up against a deadline for this grant, but we are at the finish line, and we're excited to be here. And I thank you all for your time and attention, and happy to answer any questions. But with that, I'd like to introduce Margaret Song, who has been our exceptional technical advisor throughout this process. So she's going to just give a little bit of an overview and ask at the end to what will be necessary to get us over that finish line. So thank you for your attention.
As Lauren said, my name is Margaret Song, and I'm the Commercial Industrial Program Manager at Cape Light Compact, and I am providing the technical assistance. I also feel like I need to acknowledge that I do algebra problems for fun, so, thanks for that. So I'm going to run through a couple of slides pretty quickly and try and touch upon the high points. But before I do that, I do want to acknowledge that this is coming to you guys with a tight deadline. This is tough. So I'm hopeful that I can answer some of the questions, hopefully speak to some of the benefits, and maybe move us forward, hopefully in a positive way. Ultimately, it's your decision, and I defer to that, but it's my job to at least try. So an overview of the Green Communities program. Why do people do this, right? Why would you go through months and months of efforts, or years' worth of efforts, to do this? Really? It's about access to funds. So there is approximately $150,000 for the initial grant, and then there's up to $250,000 in subsequent grants that are competitive in nature. The map that you see there on the right are all the folks that have become Green Communities as of last year. We are, and I am currently working... We are, and I am currently working with a number of Green Communities on the Cape and Vineyard currently. So there's a lot of folks that are being added. Why would people want to do this, right? So maybe you already have the funds, you have capital funds, you have a budget process, right? So, one of the reasons why is that there are sometimes things where you may want to do things out of cycle. There are also things where it might be helpful to have some other funds to help with your capital budget. We know that sometimes bids come in higher, so this can be helpful. And there's a range of projects that are in there that it shows you what it can take, what you can take advantage of. One of the things that I have heard from a lot of communities, sorry, is that, and it's the last bullet, is the administrative costs. So some people say, well, this is going to add work. Just so you know, up to 10% of the grant can be used to cover administrative costs, including, say, the school district. The other thing that I just want to add is that the grant that is paying for me to be here, meaning that the state is paying for me to help get this across the finish line or whenever that is, they are paying me directly. And this is unlike any other grant that I have seen, where they say, we are going to not only offer you money, but we are going to offer you technical assistance dollars from an outset entity to help you move it forward. And so I can say that I am under contract, and I will continue to help wherever possible. So, as folks have alluded to already, there are five criteria that you must meet. The three out of five were met through the 2019 town meeting, so those are done. The energy reduction plan, which is in front of you today, will be up for vote by Select Board, and I understand that School Committee does not have it as a vote for today, but hopefully we'll talk about next steps in a subsequent slide. The fuel-efficient vehicle policy has already been adopted by the Select Board, and in, thank you very much to Superintendent for his help in getting us the information to convince the D U E R, the state, on how the school works, because there is a little bit of education there, right? And I meant that pun. And so we were able to hopefully get that into a smooth place, so thank you very much. So, here's the energy reduction plan. So before I dive into it, I do want to give a huge shout out to Diane O'Neill for not only letting us access the buildings, giving us insight into what goes on, but also for doing a really close read. And so she has been very patient with me, with all of my emails, and I have lots of them. But, so, at least so far, she has not told me to stop, so I'm going to continue. So, the next sort of thing is that, just so you know, the energy reduction plan, the way that the state works is they can't just give you money for doing nothing, right? So they want to know, are you serious? Do you really mean it? Are there ways that you could get to the 20% reduction? So that's what you see here. But I will tell you that I've been working with communities that are, have been in it from the very beginning, and they have not hit their 20%. They don't take away the money. They don't steal your boiler in the middle of the night. They're not going to come over here and like do bad things. They're not going to make you do anything. What the goal is, is to improve your buildings, to help you move it forward. This should be a positive thing. It should not be, hopefully, something that is problematic. Just so you know, we are using fiscal year 18 as our baseline, which does mean that we can count fiscal year 19 towards the efforts. I do want to point out that, and it's the graphic on the bottom, and it's really hard to see, so sorry for the eye test, but for the buildings, and this doesn't include water sewer, because they don't, for whatever reason, include that in buildings, but when you look across the buildings, the school is number one. That's what you see in the purple. And I've done a highlight there on the right, because one of the things that is absolutely amazing about what you guys have done is that you've dropped 7% since FY '18 to FY '19 in terms of your energy usage. That's incredible. And so when we're talking about those 20%, 20% reductions, you've already got 7%. What this plan now then looks at is, are there things that we can identify that could potentially get you there? You already have a number of them in your capital plan. The heat recovery wheels, the boiler at the high school, those are huge. Like you already have some gigantic projects. So we anticipate that you're going to be in double-digit savings soon. One of the things that I know is a concern is, will this, will this make, will this be the list that I have to live from? And I can tell you with experience in some of my own communities, no. So I have the town of Harwich, I've been helping them. We submitted a plan. As soon as the plan was over, there was a big capital need. They did a study, and you know what? We, we supported those projects that were never in the plan. And so, you know, as was discussed earlier, this is a living document. And they do recognize that technology, cost priorities, do have to take a role here. So I do want to emphasize that you do not have to see this as something that constrains you. Sorry, I'm just going to go back for just a second. On the energy reduction plan, we did find out that you folks may not have gotten the most recent version. So I did just want to note a couple of the things, and again, many thanks to Diane for actually reading through the pages and the numbers and everything to make sure we got it right. So, to compound, we're removing that because it is a rental property. We have made a small edit on page nine, that the administrative vehicle is now noted as the driver's ed vehicle, because that's what it is. On page 11, under Diane's description, it says a 31 grounds team, sort of awkwardly written. We changed that to a team of 31 people, because that just is better. And then on the costs, and this is a big deal, the costs are using a database called RS Means that looks at sort of average costs and things that are going on. But we acknowledge that the town of Nantucket, the school district of Nantucket are going to see different pricing. And so what we've done in this most recent version is remove those costs and put TBD. We've also put asterisks next to the measures that are not currently in your capital plan. And we've put in a note that says, these measures are not currently in the school district's capital plan, and implementation of these measures will rely upon review by the facilities director and school district before measures can be considered for adoption. Because at the end of the day, I'm not going to come in the middle of the night and install a boiler, I don't even know how to do that. What it needs to be is something that's right for you, and that works for you, and in your timeline. So sorry, that was a lot of words. I feel like I should get students to do this instead, that might be better. So the next thing is the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. I think we've resolved the majority of the issues at this point, and it was really that the state didn't understand some of the intricacies here. But the state has very specific things that they want to see. And just for everyone's knowledge, all of the school vehicles and equipment are exempt except for the one driver's ed vehicle. They do not come and make you change out your cars, it only affects the new purchases. And then I put some examples there on the right of, if you were to buy a gasoline-powered vehicle now, all those Fords, they meet them, they actually exceed them. So it does help. It's just that they don't want you to take an old clunker and put it into operation. They really are trying to make sure you're going in the right direction. So, given the nature of today's conversation, and acknowledging that the policy is that you do review things at one meeting with votes at a subsequent meeting, I do just want to note that the D U E R made very clear to us today that the town and school cannot submit, will not be approved for Green Communities designation unless the school district, and namely, the superintendent writes a letter saying that the vehicle policy and the energy reduction plan are adopted. So if there is no discussion that gives some sort of indication to the superintendent that such a letter can be written, the town and school district would have to wait until next fall to submit a letter. So I just, I want to be very clear on the implications. I absolutely hate that I have to do that at a public session. I wish that this could have been given more time in the past, so it's a terrible place to be. But I am hopeful that this helps to give some sort of context, to give some sort of direction, and hopefully moves us forward. And I will say that even if there is a letter, you can add caveats. You know, if there are things that would make it much more comfortable to indicate adoption, then I think that they would be willing to accept that.
If I may, through the, through the chair, I just want to remind the School Committee that we have passed policy E E B A, which is school-owned vehicles. And I have added just a few pieces to that, which I don't think affect the, the gist of that policy. And I have also written the rules and procedures for E E B A, which is the superintendent's job, not the school committee's, to pass. So I think between those two pieces, we have what meets the D U E R. Margaret and I have gone back and forth.
Thank you for your patience with me.
With the D U E R. And so I, I don't think the policy piece is a concern for us. The harder piece, or the discussion piece, should be the energy reduction plan. As Margaret now knows, the, such a plan typically comes to the School Committee meeting at one meeting, and you discuss it, and then it comes up for a vote at a subsequent meeting. So because we didn't have the energy reduction plan until this week, that wasn't, we weren't able to give it to you at the, at the previous meeting. Should you decide that you would want me to write a letter in support of this, I can write a letter that talks about the policy and the procedures that are attached, and that the reduction, energy reduction plan was presented to the School Committee on November 19th. I think, I don't think anybody in the community is against trying to reduce our energy consumption, and I think we all would, would agree to that. I think what does make us nervous, perhaps, is seeing a laundry list of things that we, we may be committing our financial resources to, and I think you've spoken to that. So I guess that's all I will say, and turn it back over to the chair and to the School Committee to respond to any questions.
Sure, sure. I just, I have to comment that this, you know, after speaking with you, Margaret, this has been an ongoing project that's been in the works for, you know, a year, at least started in March. And so from my standpoint, it's frustrating that in less, you know, less than a week ago, we're receiving these materials, which then again, changed on Friday, which then again, you know, you, you just keep asking for these changes, and I, I appreciate that you say it's a fluid document. It's, it's challenging for us to really feel comfortable with it at this point, and I would feel more comfortable personally if we had been a part of this process from, from the beginning. And I feel like that's how it should have gone if we're an integral piece of this. I feel like we were handed a document, and we're being pushed into a corner because now the deadline is next week. So that's, that's my standpoint. I'm going to pass this along to the other board members for their feedback.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with what's been said so far, and I appreciate what Mr. Cozart had to add to that. I, I just feel like we would be remiss to respond on such short notice. I think it's our responsibility to the community to do our due diligence on our behalf, so that's my stance on it.
Yep, I, I don't necessarily disagree with anything that's been said. I appreciate, Mike, your consideration of forming the letter. I personally, for myself, would like to have a conversation with Diane, or to hear from Diane, how this is going to affect her department. And I know I hear already from the finances, and I appreciate that, but as far as the workload, if, and I don't know if it would increase Diane's plate or not, but before I was willing to make a vote, I'd want to hear, hear from Diane, and maybe because there is such a tight timeline, and it's next week, if we felt after this discussion that we would be willing to reconvene, having, I mean, I, I appreciate getting it on Friday, and then with the changes, but I haven't had enough time to really read and understand it. So that's what I could offer, is that we would be willing to, or would we be willing to reconvene prior to the deadline that you need a vote for us to have further discussion, that's all.
I agree with what's been said, but I, just out of curiosity, where's the 20% come from?
So the majority of the savings are actually from building upgrades, so it's additional lighting.
But why pick 20%?
Oh, where did the state choose 20%?
Yes, and then they're going to give us back our tax dollars then.
That's correct. So this is actually out of legislation. So the Green Communities Act of 2008 established what is called the Green Communities Program, and they established the 20%. So it was some legislator somewhere who thought it was a good number. Does that help to answer your question?
It does, but I'm always suspicious of our legislators. I mean, no man is safe when they're in session.
Yeah. I will say that there are over 200 communities that are getting it back. So I think your point on the tax dollars is important there.
Through, through the chair. And I'm going to risk speaking for Diane, and you can tell me later, Diane, if I'm right or wrong. I, I think that, I, I feel very confident that we have already made plans to do some of the things, and I think Margaret spoke of some of the things, the replacing the high school, middle school boilers, and we've done an awful lot of work in the last five years to this end. So I don't think that this is necessarily going to create more work. We still will have our capital plan that moves us forward. And we are always looking to reduce our energy consumption. It's, it's been a, something we've talked about every budget year, as you've had us report on our, our fuel and electricity consumption. And this is something that we are constantly doing, and I think we've done a great job. So I'm not, I'm not afraid of meeting the standard, and I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to create more work for us, but our focus will still be our focus. You know, we will be the ones that will, who will determine what projects have risen to the top. And I didn't, I didn't hear that from Margaret, that we should be concerned about that list. So I guess that's what I would, would offer.
Steve?
Well, I am concerned about that list, or should I say lists? I mean, we got a list last week that had, and I put the figures together about the three.
And/or you. So none of those things are things that you have to do. And in fact, you know, there was a project that we removed the pool cover, because that didn't, you know, Diane said that didn't make sense, so we did.
Could I, could I follow up on that?
Sure.
Where in this document does it say that we don't have to do these things?
So that was the addition that we added based upon the concerns that we, that I read off, and I apologize that I read that very quickly. But the latest addition does say that, and I can read it again, does that help to read it again?
No, I don't think, well, if what you're asking is, and I thought the drop dead date was like the day after tomorrow.
The 22nd.
It's the 22nd.
And today is?
The 19th, so the day after tomorrow.
Right, so it's not next week.
It's not.
Our getting together next week is not going to resolve.
Right.
This issue. I did hear you say, and I think this is the way it should have started out, that the next date would be roughly a year from. next date would be roughly a year from now. We should be a part of that discussion in order to clarify issues, change issues, et cetera. I'm just uncomfortable, troubled, at signing off on even the current version as over a dozen TBDs to be determined. I just don't see how we can sign off on a document like that. I'm not anti-green, I hope, I try.
You don't seem to be.
But, but it's too many unknowns to sign off on without significant consideration and clarification.
I, I defer. You, you folks are the ones who ultimately make the decision, but after some good conversations with the superintendent and the facilities director, we did add the specific language and remove those costs on the TBD, because we have been seeing, or Diane has been seeing some really high bid costs come in. So we did put the TBD in for now, to address the fact that those prices have been coming in well above what was expected in some cases, and we did put in that language saying for anything that's not already in your capital budget, that these are only going to be implemented upon review by the facilities director and the school district, before they can be considered for adoption. So we did put in that specific language, because I think your concerns are very valid. You don't want to have to put those funds towards these measures when you have greater needs within the schools. I, I absolutely believe in that.
And where, you offered to tell me where that language is?
That's going to be, and so right now, there's an asterisk next to the word planned on those charts, on those lists that you were referring to, and it is a footnote that is being, that has been added to page thirteen.
Yes, yes.
In our discussions, I did ask the question, is there a timeline on when these projects have to be done? We went through our capital plan, and basically, none of those projects are on our capital plan, except for the boiler in the high school, and I'm already getting the energy recovery wheels done in the pool. Those things are under contract right now. And so going forward in our five or 10-year plan, and Margaret and I spoke of this, none of those projects that are outlined are on our capital plan. So I asked her, is there a timeline? And she said, no. So I felt a little better about that, that we weren't being asked to change our whole five or 10-year plan based on this. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
And I'm on page thirteen, and I'm not seeing a footnote.
We don't have that. That was in
Right, that's what I was
the updated rendition that we don't have.
So we're being asked to sign off on something we don't have? I can't see it.
So, Margaret, it was my understanding that you said that the community doesn't necessarily need the school's blessing to still gain the green community status, and that we could work with the town on a plan, with our facilities director, that we feel comfortable with, and then update the overall plan, including the school district. Does that stand current?
No, no.
So that was Friday, you said that to me.
Yes, because I had had a conversation with someone there who said, well, could you do it this way? And I said, that could be an option. We did get clarification from her superior today, saying that that is not an option, that it is either all in, or not at all.
That's a lot of pressure for us.
It is a lot, I know.
In the final moment, when we're just getting these documents, that aren't even complete by our standards, because there are new copies being circled and cycled around that we don't have here in the moment.
Understood.
So I, I understand the reticence of the school committee to, to move forward, but our funding source is the town of Nantucket. So the person who might be most reticent would be possibly Libby and the town government, and they don't seem to be reticent. So if, if there is something that's on this list that needs to be done, then we use that in discussions with the town in talking about capital appropriation. So we have nothing to lose and everything to gain in some respects, but I, I'm not minimizing your concerns, just sharing.
It would be nice to hear from the state what the actual requirements are, you know, when you're saying, well, there is flexibility. It would be nice to have that in writing, so we can say that this isn't, you know, we don't have to follow through with all, replacing all of these items. There isn't a time, it wouldn't, it would be nice to have those things from the state saying that we're not required to follow this plan step by step, we're not, you know, nailed to it.
And may I add, it would be nice to have something from the town that indicates that they will step up to the plate. It's all well and good to say, we will approach the town, but that doesn't mean that they will support giving us, in addition to our regular budgetary needs, whatever it takes to do what we commit ourselves to. So those are two completely unknowns.
I do believe, I do believe they have passed. They've approved this at a town meeting, if I'm not correct, please let me know, but if you, if the town has passed this same plan, they've committed to it. Have they not?
But, but we, they haven't had that conversation with us, and, and we've been told that we're integral part, we have to sign off, otherwise, you know, no.
That's what I find kind of odd, that that hasn't happened. Does anybody find that odd? I mean, just a little bit?
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, we want to do what's right for the town, don't get us wrong, but we, we want to do it in decent and in order. We want to do it the right way, and I, I think the majority of us feel, and it's been expressed, that I don't think we're at that point, and if we have to wait a year, I think we have to wait a year. I'm just going to put that out there. We can go back and forth, back and forth, but it's not going to make us change our mind tonight, I don't think. I really don't think that.
And if that's the route we choose, and it seems like we are, please make sure that we're involved.
Through the chair, if I can just put a different view on it, and just say that what would we need tonight in order to, if we, what would we need this evening in order to put forward a vote?
Well, I want, I'd like verification from the state that we are not pressured to follow this list. This plan that was put before us less than a week ago, that's changed several times, guarantee that we are not tied down to this. I'd like some sort of verification from the state. I mean, I had a conversation with Margaret on Friday, who said, you know, it just, there are too many variables. She said that the town does not need our support, and they could go forward with this, and now all of a sudden, absolutely, we need your support. So it just, it's very unnerving to me, that it, it's just going back and forth, there's no black and white, it's just very unclear.
I just wanted to clarify that the select board is considering tomorrow night the energy reduction plan. That was the latest iteration sent to the school, incorporating all of Diane's comments and on the asterisks, and so we really wanted to make sure that we were passing the plan most appropriate to your concern. So that is on the docket for tomorrow night, and we'll see how tonight goes, but.
Yeah, so Jen, would, would it be helpful, I mean, will it make a difference if we can get in writing from the state within the next day, a letter?
I think it would be helpful for our board members to see what they are requiring of us, and to see their flexibility, and that we're not, you know, tied down to certain amount of money, you know, per year, or certain list of items that we need to replace. It would be helpful.
Yeah, and with, sorry, I always have a lot of questions.
No, that's okay, Margaret.
So does that mean that you would potentially write, have the superintendent write a letter contingent upon that? Is that something that?
I don't think legally we can do that. No. I mean, I'm not the school committee's lawyer, but I am a lawyer.
Yeah.
And I don't think we can pass something like this contingent upon something from the state. Procedurally, we would have to get together again, on short notice, at a posted meeting, which means we'd have to post it today, forty-eight, well, tomorrow, forty-eight hours, still is going to take us, I think, past your deadline.
Don?
I just wanted to say that, frankly, we're in the same boat as you, in terms of reviewing this final document. I mean, it, it has been changed up until today, and we're talking about it tomorrow night, based on changes that were requested by school administration. So we, we're up against the exact same deadline as you. We, we are somewhat, we are in this together, and we are relying on the advice of our experts.
Had you not seen it before last week?
No.
I don't think the town.
I had not seen this, this version before last week.
How about any version?
But
We haven't seen it.
No, it's been worked on internally.
Right.
With our experts, I mean, administration has been reviewing it, but we in terms, in terms of the board, but we are supportive of this effort, and we are relying on the advice of our experts, that, and we will ultimately be the ones who have to approve giving you funding for anything. So I'm just, I, I'm, I hate to see this sit for a year, when, with such an opportunity,
Yeah, and I do apologize, the audits happened in late September, or in September, we were prioritizing the school's opening, which I think is important. The engineering reports did take some time to come in, then we cross-checked them, so it is late, I acknowledge that, and it is a lot to digest, so that is on us. But, you know, at the end of the day, I do just want to reemphasize that the state did make it clear to us that they actually don't need a school committee vote, so it doesn't have to be a formal vote, that it does need to be a letter from the superintendent. But again, that is all what, you know, what I'm hearing is reticence, and, but I did just want to clarify, given some of the comments earlier on what, what necessarily was required. That's all, I'm just, I just want to be clear.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks.
All right, at this point, I feel that we've seen the presentation, and we'll move on to the next item.
Okay, first quarter budget update. Martin? Welcome? We don't have an extra seat. Are you going to sit here? Take my seat. Thank you.
Temporary seat.
Temporary.
Yes. Good evening.
Good morning.
This is the first quarter presentation, coming kind of late this year, but as usual, we have to wait for the school launch program, P and L to be ready for us to review, so, so we can take a look at all, both the budgets of the community school, the Nantucket Public School, and the school launch program. We've, I've redone the presentation, after consulting with the, with the school committee, so today you have a new kind of comparison that you can look through, presenting the past three years of actual expenses and budgets, in, in different groups within our budget, as well as charts that show this comparison and reflect them. I apologize for the dark, black background, I'm a huge fan of dark background, backgrounds, but that might not necessarily be your cup of tea, so that can change in the future. I mean, this is just a, this was just what I came up for this presentation, this can be changed if people desire to. As you will see, our payroll so far this year is roughly $31,000 over last year. Now, there is a caveat to that, this year, we're splitting payroll for the school twenty, in twenty-seven biweekly periods, as opposed to twenty-six. This occurs every seven years, so we have to make a decision, because of accrues for teachers in the summer, and we don't want to prepay of sorts, so that's why this year we're splitting in twenty-seven as opposed to twenty-six. Next year, we go back to the, to the regular schedule of twenty-six biweekly payrolls. So since, since we're doing that, payroll would have been higher this year, if we were splitting in twenty-six, I just want to make that note. Our realistic payroll is more than what's presented here, and it's going to catch up as the quarters go by. Twenty-five percent of total budget has been committed at this point, which is exactly the same as last year, which is strange, falling on at, at the quarter at twenty-five percent, but it just happens two years in a row. And then the same thing with payroll, it's at fourteen percent expended as of September thirtieth. This year, we are monitoring a lot, again, repair and maintenance is, and utilities. Utilities have been trending stable, but repair and maintenance, we still have an ongoing, some residual HVAC repairs and maintenance, that we're going to finish probably by, by the end of this year, and we'll be done with it. It's been, I've reported last year, as you remember, every quarter, that this was the big, the big item last year, we expanded over $300,000 for fiscal year nineteen on HVAC repairs and maintenance. Everything else, if you look at the chart, looks pretty much the same. I want to make a notation of the spent, spent tuition expense, the way I've presented it, I don't want people to be confused that we've already overspent the budget at 125%. I've added an asterisk on the bottom, we do have state funding, which is the circuit breaker, and for fiscal year twenty, it's a little over $337,000, which I would apply, usually I do in the third quarter of the fiscal year for consistency and reporting purposes. I mean, it can be probably applied once we've reached that level of expense. So far, the 688-803, not to confuse everybody, represent actual expense and outstanding commitment, which is purchase orders, or expenses that we anticipate but have not yet been incurred. Everything else, I mean, I, I don't know whether the board, the committee has questions, it's, it's pretty much in line, I don't, I didn't notice any big fluctuations. The other, the other thing was hardware, software, and I wanted to make a, a note that last year, we got a one-time increase of $133,000 for the purchase of Chromebooks, and that's the reason why last year, we expanded 211, and this year, we are back to 142 of actual expenses and, and encumbrances. It's, last year, we, we had a one-time increase in the budget of $133,000, which this year we, we do not have.
Where did that come from, Martin?
That comes from free cash, so free cash, once certified, can be used for one-time expenses that do not stay in the budget there, just for that fiscal year, or capital projects.
Thank you, I'm going to go around, Zona, any questions, comments? You must have comments.
I don't.
What about the new format? That you requested?
Remove the, the black background?
Maybe, okay. Moving on.
I did, I have a couple of comments. Martin, I noticed, when I go down the budget, I'm looking at what has been budgeted, what's been encumbered, and so a couple of things jumped out at me, and it was all actually interesting, interesting, it was under salary score D, that there is some expenditures and non-budgeted line items, I just wonder if you could just explain that, please?
That's, that's D is incomplete, it's the D O E two, so this is the way we report administrative assistance, they are either ten months or twelve months, and I've, in the past, they used to be all reported in one org, which was 511-59 across all schools. I've made a point this year to split them all, to be reported where they belong, so a ten-month ESP would be in 511-58, and a twelve-month would be in 511-59. Because the budgets were voted already last Because the budgets were voted already last year at town meeting in April, they were, they were set up in five-one-one-five-nine. So, I've made these adjustments and moved them internally. So, on the next presentation, you won't have zeros in these budgets.
Perfect. Thank you. And then just one other note on equipment. There was eleven thousand dollars expended on a non-budgeted line item, one-three-eight-eight-four-five-four-two-oh-six.
It was a one-time expenditure. We usually don't have a budget in equipment. A lot of it goes in repair and maintenance or contractors' expense, but this one was strictly equipment. We rarely do purchases, so that's why we didn't put budget for FY twenty.
What was the equipment?
I'll have to check and get back to you on that, to be honest with you. It's escaping me right now. It will come up, but I-
I'm afraid if I Google that, nothing will come up.
Tim?
Thank you, Martin.
Okay. Steve?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Martin.
Joel?
Good.
You're good? All right. Thank you. Moving on to, no, he's not leaving. Thank you. We're moving on to federal grants.
Oh, the community school and school lunch program I didn't go over. This was just the public school part.
Oh, perfect. Okay, sorry.
So, the community school, the total revenues for the first quarter of the fiscal year were a little over fifty-six thousand dollars more than the previous year. And that's mostly due to a fifty thousand dollar increase in public appropriation from the town. The additional six thousand were various programs coming ahead of last year, namely, the extended day and summer, summer camp. Some revenues in other programs, like a doubt at, were slightly down, or, and drivers at this, we consider, I think, these are timing of revenues and programs that were, that were done. So, I feel that they should be on track as the quarters develop. The first quarter is usually kind of a strange quarter. I always use the second as a, as a metric of how the year will be. So, so far, it's still a positive community school. This is the sixth consecutive, or seventh consecutive quarter that they see revenue growth, which is very, very encouraging for us, because this is what drives expenses. I mean, the revenue generation, and so it's a job well done. Expenses have increased over last year of about thirty thousand dollars. These are mostly contractual obligations, as well as medical insurance costs associated with employees.
Sure. Can you remind us the percentage of the town appropriation to their budget? And is it twenty percent? It used to be twenty, twenty percent?
I believe right now, it's twenty-nine, close to thirty percent, because the budget in total is one point seven, so it's five hundred thousand. It's, it's a little-
But the majority of that is in health insurance, correct?
A lot of it is health insurance cost. They're close to three hundred thousand dollars budgeted.
Thank you.
And that changes, of course, as everybody knows. I mean, we, we do get the pricing for the plans kind of late, so we have to assume a certain increase. And also, depending on the employee status. I mean, if an employee obviously gets married, they move to a different plan, that becomes a different kind of expense for medical insurance, which the community school has to cover. The ninety percent portion. Ten percent is covered by employees on, on the PPO plans, and then eighty-twenty split on the master medical.
Thank you.
School lunch program, short month, so a little over three weeks. They operated at a deficit of forty-one-three-hundred. I always caution, this is not to be alarmed about. The beginning of the year is always time where inventories are stocked up, and, you know, everybody's getting ready for the program. It ramps up. So, I've always noticed that the first invoice we get from ChartWells is the highest for the year. And this was the case with September. Last year, the deficit was thirty-eight-six-ninety-nine. In dollar terms, sales increased, which is, which is good news, twenty-seven-hundred dollars. We had two more operating days. As you know, this year, Labor Day was early, so we had twenty-one operating days for the school lunch program as opposed to nineteen a year ago. Free and reduced have maintained, they hover around forty, forty-four percent for the, for the month of September this year, forty percent last year. I think it's gonna stay around forty-four, probably, or move around that, that number throughout, throughout the whole year, honestly. And this year, oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm just gonna ask if you have any questions. I do regarding the lunch. Again, this is, this program also pays for their own health insurance?
No, they are employees of ChartWells. We contract with ChartWells, so every person that works in the cafeteria is an employee, including the food-
Through ChartWells?
Yes, including the food service director, which is the admin position within, within the program.
Okay. Thank you.
And this year, the subsidy, the budgeted subsidy, or the allowable deficit in the program is fifty-five thousand four-thirty-six, which is a ten thousand dollars drop from last year. Last year, it was sixty-five thousand. I just wanna make the point also that we, should, should the deficit be higher, we can go after the management fee, which we paid to ChartWells, which is upwards of eleven thousand dollars. So, hopefully, we won't go there. The last two years have been very good, I have to say. Huge kudos to the food service director and her staff, and, and, and it's deficit-wise and money-wise, the program has done great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zona? Pauline?
No.
Tim? Steve?
Negative.
Joel? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin.
You're welcome. Federal, oh, yeah.
Do you wanna speak to the federal grants?
Either or. The federal grants, as you can see, this is a presentation usually Mike, we make together with Mike. This year, six-hundred-twenty-one thousand dollars. Certain grants, we are seeing a very slight decline. This is across, across the state. These are trends that every community is experiencing, I believe. Title one has dropped slightly, title two, title three, title four, a little bit. Integrated preschool has grown, IDEA, the SPAD grant has grown. And Perkins Five Secondary, this is a vocational grant, so this is the first year that we're seeing it. It's part of an initiative for the twenty-first century vocational education that's been undertaken. I, I don't have experience with this grant, so I've read about it, but this is, this is new this year to the district. You have- Grants, and then the third part is-
No questions? Steve?
No.
And the last part of, of the presentation is the roll forward. Where do we go from here, I guess, next year? Our roll forward this year is the largest I've seen. It's nine-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. It is a substantial amount just to move the existing obligations, contractual, and operating expenses into the new fiscal year. There are some, some things that we've seen this year. The busing contract being one went up slightly with Cape Cod Collaborative and other things, but mostly, this is a reflection of increased payroll costs, and that's where we are. The history has been, ever since I've been here, I went back as far back as two thousand sixteen. We have been anywhere between five-hundred-and-eighty thousand, this being the largest number. Last year, we, it was kind of a tricky roll-forward number, because the payroll amount was eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. But then, we had to take away the one-hundred-and-thirty-three from our operating that I talked about, which was a one-time increase. So, that made it to be around seven-hundred thousand. Otherwise, last year even would have been around eight-hundred-and, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So.
Thank you, Martin. Questions or comments? Pauline?
No.
Tim? Steve? Joel? All right, thank you very much, Martin, for your presentation.
Thanks.
All right, committee discussions and votes to take?
Chairman?
Yes?
If I recall correctly, and I know I do, a while back, we talked about the possibility of finding a way to combine these. Looking at tonight's list, there are ten donations to approve. What is the process?
We did talk about that, but at the same time, I think it's important to acknowledge the people who do donate independently.
Okay.
I'm going to also look to Logan.
Okay, I like her reason better.
Well, I, we're very appreciative of the donations, and I wanna make sure that the community understands that.
I agree.
But, yeah, that's like a standing board policy, is that they have to be read individually into the minutes. And I'll reflect on that later when I report from the subcommittee.
Thank you. I have a vote to approve donation fundraising twenty percent net from Hayward Photography to NHS in the amount of two thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and eleven cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation fundraising twenty percent net from Hayward Photography to CPS in the amount of one thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and eighteen cents.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation fundraising twenty-five percent net from Hayward Photography to NIS in the amount of two thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation fundraising twenty-five percent net from Hayward Photography to NES in the amount of three thousand sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a quick question before you go further? What, what the difference in the percentage?
Thank you.
More students having their photos purchased.
In the lower grades? Is that, okay.
Yeah, but twenty and twenty-five percent?
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
I think that's pretty common to see a higher percentage in the elementary and intermediate school, and to see it drop in the middle and high school.
Basically, because their gross is higher, because more kids, parents buy the photos.
Or buy the bigger packages.
Or less, less.
And then, it's not unusual for the high school to bump up again because of seniors, so many seniors.
You know, as our kids get older, we reduce the package size and the number of pictures we wanna take home with us.
Thank you.
Okay. Vote to approve donation from Educate Incorporated for NES referral bonus in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Saint Paul's Church to NES for additional school supplies in the amount of three hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Anonymous to Adopt a Lunch Tray Program in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from David and Virginia McCollie to Adopt a Lunch Tray Program in the amount of hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's a lunch tray program?
It's a program to-
This, this is a program, yeah, that you could, you can donate money, and it provides lunch for our students. You can adopt a lunch tray, provides lunch for our students.
So, you're not buying trays, you're helping kids eat.
Right, right.
Okay.
Vote to approve donation from Sandra Morgan to Adopt a Lunch Tray Program in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation from Sheer Schwambek Charitable Fund via Community Foundation for Nantucket to Adopt a Lunch Tray Program in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve November fifth, twenty nineteen, meeting minutes?
Move approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve transfers and invoices?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report?
Question before we move on to Mike, sorry. Who's responsible for doing the outreach for the fundraising for the lunch program?
Oh, here it comes. Who's responsible?
Well, it seems, it seems somebody must have done a push.
Well, I think it came from the article in the paper about Linda and the program. And that's when we started getting some calls. I would say that there are other people who work to that end and follow up. Logan being one, and Linda being another, who follow up with people. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, I was just curious.
It's a great program.
It's nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Logan.
Budget planning calendar.
So, I have an updated, excuse me, updated calendar from what I gave you at our last meeting. We've hardened a few dates. We are still trying to figure out, get a confirmation of their presentation to FinCom. They had given us a date of Monday, January thirteenth, and we have requested Thursday, January sixteenth, because that follows the budget hearing on January fourteenth. So, we haven't confirmed that, but I think that they will work with us on that. The, and before I go talk about master campus plan, I would like to mention that we received notice today, sort of in a roundabout way, that the, the group that we often know of as the We Whalers, and I think it's the Children's Center now, will be closing December twentieth. And some of the board members will remember that this happened a few years ago, and the community, community school stepped in to keep it afloat until the end of the year. I just would like to be clear that this is not necessarily the school system's job to solve or problem to solve, but I think we are players in that. And so, to that end, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with some of the key people. Tracy Roberts from the community school, and the elementary principal and assistant principal, and Beth and I. But beyond that, I think there will be, or needs to be, some outreach to other preschool and daycare providers in the community, so that the onus isn't simply, you know, what are we going to do to solve it?
Can you answer to why they're closing?
I cannot. You know, you hear different things, and I think it's always a concern when you hear an announcement like that with a one-month deadline. I feel for the parents and the community. I know that there are a lot of families that will be affected by that. What happened last time is that probably even as we speak, people are rushing to the other providers to either get on the wait list, because there aren't really openings there. So, I, I don't know what's going to happen, but I wanted to acknowledge that tonight, and acknowledge that we are meeting to discuss it.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. And then, the master campus plan, we've alluded to this before. Diane and I and a few other people have been meeting with the architects from SMRT to talk about the use of the campus and the design of the campus. I've talked about this before, but some of that was maybe behind closed doors. Originally, we were going to move from building the building to deciding where the athletic fields would be placed. And we have decided that before we can determine where athletic fields are going to be placed, we need to know where the next school will go. Because we don't wanna put fields in place and then say, oh, that two million dollars was wasted, because that's where the next school is going to go. And I hope that we have ten years before that time comes, but really, that depends on enrollment. And as we have reported to the school committee before, we're pretty tight sneakers in the middle school and high school right now. This October was the first year that our enrollment has leveled. Excuse me. So, we're in hopes that that will maybe continue. But we would not be doing due diligence if we weren't planning for where that next school is going to go. At this point, we're not planning on what that school should be. There's discussion about whether it might be a middle school, whether it might be a high school. But in any case, we need to know where it's going to go. Will it go where the soccer field is in the valley between our office and the elementary school? Or would it go where the field hockey field is right now? If we are committed to a, a campus, which we've always had, and I think we should take great pride in our school campus. It's really much like a university campus to keep all of our- in our school campus, it's really much like a, um, a university campus to keep, um, all of our students in, in one area. It's really something pretty special. So we need to be planning. And that's what this campus design is. We want to fit in where the next school will go, um, where the fields might go, where any new construction, maybe tennis courts, um, might go because that's a new program in our schools. And maybe even where we might build some, um, staff residences in that whole plan. So all of that is being considered as we look at the remaining space that is contiguous, um, that we own right now and, um, taking a look at other spaces that are contiguous that we might acquire. If we want to keep that campus, um, someday we're going to outgrow the existing, um, campus. So we have an eye towards all of those pieces. Um, we've, we've had several meetings with the architects and, um, I think we've had six or seven plans presented and we've thrown out five or six, um, because they don't meet one aspect or another. Um, but it's, it's fun and we will bring the school committee and the, uh, the school community in, into the loop at some point. We're not quite there, but we wanna have a few, um, plans that, that make sense before we share it.
Mike, would you be on staff housing? Would you be talking like through the NET like we did before or?
Um, I think there are a lot of different ways that we could go. Um, we've talked about, would we build a, um, a dorm-like structure like the yacht club did, if, if, if any of you are familiar with the building that they brought in there? Um, or would we build, um, you know, five standalone one bedrooms? You lose an economy of scale with, um, heating and ventilation and all of that. So we're, all of those are parts of the conversation right now, but we know that we will continue to need staff housing and options. And, and maybe they're not all clustered together. Maybe they are, um, in different places on the, on the school campus. So it's, it's fun. It's exciting and, you know, a little daunting. It's hard to be talking about this just after completing a new school. Um, but our enrollments are what, what dictate our needs.
All right. Thank you. Subcommittee updates? Any subcommittee updates? We're gonna talk about the, um, the mask conference at a later date.
I just wanna report on the Cape Collaborative that I finally made him to.
Woo, woo-hoo!
They said they hadn't seen anybody since Robin, if that tells you anything, so.
It wasn't just me, huh?
It was quite interesting. Um, very informative group. Um, they kinda ran their board meeting, just a little bit different, took votes a little different. So it was kinda nice and refreshing to see things, uh, done just, uh, ever so slightly different. And they served food, I gotta tell you. That makes a difference when you have to take a late boat home afterward. Um, but quite interesting. Uh, they don't just do buses. Um, there's the Waypoint School. And by the way, they're losing their site at the end of June, so they're in a rush to try to find a new space for that. And it's quite a special program. Um, I have to say everyone there was, uh, very warm and inviting and I just, uh, enjoyed the time that I spent. So I'm still being educated, so I asked it to be patient, but it was quite, um, it was quite, uh, a great thing to be a part of, I have to tell you.
Thank you for going.
Thank you, Zona, for going.
Thank you for going, yeah.
Did they, if I may, did they, um, talk about having you have the ability to call in if you needed?
Yeah.
So you don't have to go every time?
Absolutely, you don't have to go. Uh, but I will be reimbursed for that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. This is the first time in how many years we've had someone go, so that's an easy reimbursement.
Yeah, they, um, they were actually setting up the phone for me when I walked in, so it was kinda funny.
Oh, nice.
Very nice. That's great. Any updates, any other updates on subcommittee work?
Just a couple of things. Well, Zona and Mike and I attended the planning board and the economic, uh, committee, development committee last night. Uh, the discussion was on the roundabout of Surfside and Bartlett. And again, interesting to attend another town meeting, I mean, town board. Um, they allowed us several public comments. So both Zona and I spoke twice. And, uh, they certainly hear our concern and they really have an interest in working with us to get us to feel comfortable with the roundabout. It seemed that that was going to happen, but they would really prefer to have us on board. Um, that's all I can really-
May I ask if you know, does the planning board have to approve this?
Um, I don't believe they have to. I think it was sort of, um, part of a courtesy. They, they did not vote on it last night. Um, but I think they're trying to get everybody on board. And I couldn't, I couldn't really get a read. There were a lot of questions asked by the board. Um, and again, when we got into the meat of the discussion, they did invite Zona and I to come in for a second time, which we both did.
There's still a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot, just, just so you know. It's not like it's happening this year or possibly even next year. They have a, there's a lot still going on. But they did render some updated photos and, and it was some good conversation, I have to say. But, you know, I'm, I'm still not buying it, I think, at this point. Uh, but it's, it's interesting and it's, um, it's nice to know that they really want our input, really want us to buy into this and feel comfortable about what happens to the, our children, uh, on that roundabout.
Tim?
But they're interested in your input, but they want you to agree with them.
Nat does.
Yeah. And which ones are elected? So we could put their names up.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I think-
Okay, we're going, Jim Hardy would be doing this to us, so.
We're moving on now. We're moving on.
Can I just-
Negotiations are proceeding.
Thank you.
Mostly amicably.
Great. That's very good.
I have a, a student support, um, committee met today. And, uh, it just always is encouraging to me when we have our community leaders and our principals and psychologists and everybody come together at the, at the meeting to talk about, um, what we can do best in the interest for our children. And we have a lot of needs. But, um, as a school committee member, I continue to feel comfortable and confident with the staff that we have, um, at the school and the resources. And I know everybody is really stretched. And as we have our discussions and we hear a budget, we need to keep in mind, um, just how much, um, or how many needs we have in our district. And it's important that we support our staff. Um, and you'll hear more from me next meeting, but I attended a meeting around resiliency and emotional support for adults, which was fascinating. Um, sort of linked into the stress that our staff are experiencing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joel?
Um, yeah, so this Friday, we're having, uh, um, Powder Puff Football Game. So for you guys that don't know what that is, it's the, uh, the senior girls and the junior girls are gonna play a flag football game against each other. Um, it's pretty entertaining. It's at six-thirty, if you guys wanna come. Um, I wanted to thank, um, Morgan Nguyen, Rasha Kelly and Shawna Bartlett. We were a little behind on getting everything put together, but they did a great job at coordinating all the moving parts with, uh, Dr. Bucky and Mr. Morgan.
Thank you very much. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.